The May 16th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address us on city business. This portion of the meeting is from roughly 6:30 to 6:55, and if you wish to address the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office by the meeting date. That number is 949-8412. And if you get a voicemail, please leave your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. We do not record or televise these portions of the meeting, and when scheduled speakers are concluded, there's an opportunity, if you have not pre-scheduled, to address the council again at that time. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. We have some proclamations tonight, and we start with the Heritage Preservation Award. Mr. Getchow?
Mayor and council, I'd like to introduce our Heritage Preservation Commission Chair, Steve Olson, who will be presenting tonight our annual Heritage Preservation Award.
I have a couple remarks.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have the good fortune of being the Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission. Last year, I stood in front of you and said it was a pleasure to live in a community where people care. Once again, I have the privilege of giving a few remarks and providing some background on this year's Heritage Preservation Award recipient. It is obvious the recipient cares deeply about our community. This is the third Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Award. My wife, Trish, has a slightly unusual habit. She reads the obituaries daily. She gets up early, sits in the chair, and reads the obituaries. If I see her reading, I often ask, "How are the dead people today?" She lets me know. She doesn't read the obituaries to be afraid of potential accidents or diseases. She reads the obituaries to get inspired by those who have lived well. In just a few paragraphs, a person's life is summarized. The paragraphs describe the most important elements of a life. Often, family is described and celebrated; sometimes, challenges overcome are described; and often, a person's engagement with their community is described. I'm happy to tell you that we can be inspired by Jim Clark and what he has given to our community without the need for an obituary. Jim Clark has family roots that run deep in Eden Prairie. In the 1880s, his forebears settled in Eden Prairie on farmland that is now the site of the town center water tower. He had a grandfather that was the first constable of Eden Prairie and another that was the first city clerk. He graduated from Eden Prairie High School and would later join the Eden Prairie Police Force at the age of 21. He would later become the police chief. He started the first community service officer program in the early 1970s and has served as an election judge, worked to save the historic gym at the original consolidated school, and has served on the Eden Prairie Historical Society's board. His work with the Historical Society has included working in the History Center and Museum, helping during its remodeling, and critical work with its computer, hardware, and software capabilities. He is also the webmaster for their website. As a retired police chief and volunteer, Jim meets with every newly hired Eden Prairie police officer. He personally gives them a history tour of Eden Prairie and a copy of Helen Anderson's book, "The First Hundred Years." Jim's nomination was submitted by the Eden Prairie Historical Society. The society believes Jim's contributions make the organization more effective, and they very much appreciate his patience, passion, and perspective. I would like to close with an unattributed quote about volunteering that speaks about the spirit of Jim's contributions. "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in." The recipient of the 2017 Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Award is Jim Clark.[404.59][404.59](Applause)
Thanks again, Jim, and thank you, Steve, for presenting that award. It's certainly deserving for Jim, and we've certainly enjoyed working with him at the city and then also seeing him within the community as a volunteer, so thank you for that. The next item is an Award of Excellence for the Community Center Aquatics and Fitness Expansion. Yes?
Your Honor, as Amy's moving forward, if I could introduce to you Amy Peterson. She is a fellow professional in the Recreation and Parks field and profession, but she's also very involved in the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. And as important to us, all of us, she's also an Eden Prairie resident.
Oh, great. So it's so fun to come present these to the city where I reside. So, Mrs. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. It's an honor to be here to present the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association 2016 Award of Excellence to the Eden Prairie Parks and Rec Department. However, before I do that, I'd like to take a few minutes to just tell you a little bit about the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. So the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association was formed in 1937 to foster the growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Presently, we have around 850 professionals, corporate board commissioners, student and retiree members throughout the state. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association office is currently located in Fridley. So the MRPA Awards Committee was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the fields of parks, recreation, and leisure services. Award committee members represent a cross-section of association members from the state of Minnesota. The awards committee feels it's important to increase awareness of the appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, facilities, recreation programs, and services occurring in Minnesota, and that is why the Awards of Excellence program was created. The Awards of Excellence program is an annual program of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association that was solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for an outstanding project that was either implemented in 2016 or received substantial revisions in the year 2016. MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories: administrative or management strategies, communications, park and facility, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, sustainability, and volunteer initiatives. Nominations are then received and reviewed and evaluated and scored by the awards committee members. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive the award. And so on behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present an Award of Excellence to Valerie Verlee for its winning project for the Eden Prairie Community Center Aquatics Fitness and Leisure -- or for the Eden Prairie Community Center Aquatics and Fitness Expansion. So if Valerie could come on up. And then we can also have -- I'd like to invite Mayor and Jay to come up so we can get a picture, but congratulations. That's a great project.
I think so. Pretty simple.
I know we have an awful lot of users of that fitness center and the pool who would also give it awards if they could do so, and I think a big hats off goes to Jay and his department and the Park and Rec Commission and all of the potential users of the facility that put their two cents in when planning was underway, because it certainly ended up to kind of surpass all of our expectations. So, thank you very much. We need a motion here. Would somebody like to make the motion?
I would move to receive the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association MRPA Award of Excellence for the Community Center Aquatics and Fitness Expansion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the 2016 Annual Financial Report, and we have Chris Knopick, a principal in Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen, to present this for us. Did you want to add anything, Rick?
Mayor, the only thing I'll add is he's getting the presentation ready, is you spent a solid hour in workshop getting quite a bit of detail of our complete financial report and audit. In the regular portion of the meeting, following Chris's presentation, you'll be asked to take action to accept our CAFR for 2016.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and the council, for inviting me to the council meeting tonight to make our presentation. As Rick had mentioned, we did meet and workshop earlier tonight, but as we go, feel free, ask questions as we go. I'm here as long as you have questions. So, as we go, I think my PowerPoint should come up. But as we go, the first slide really just an introduction to who the audit team was.
Hmm. That's probably not the one we want.
That's later.
Do you want to go ahead and start? It seems like the first few slides you could just talked about.
And really, the first slide was just an introduction to who the audit team was. Myself is the principal, John Lorenzini is the manager, Lucas Chase is the senior associate, and then from there, we filtered in several experienced staff and associates as well. So, as we go through, you can see here just a real brief synopsis of who we are. As far as the actual audit results, this is really the important slide here. There is a separate required communication letter that the entire council did receive, but the city received an unmodified or a clean opinion for 2016's audit that is the best the city can do. And then the next three bullets on there, you see no underlined three times, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no legal compliance. Very positive results for the city on the background and the looking at the internal controls for the city, so very positive there. As far as some real basic financial results for the city, this first slide is really looking at the general fund. So you can see how you've compared over the last six years for revenues, expenditures, and then also fund balance for the city. And really, the key notes off of here is revenues came in just slightly over budget, expenditures came in just slightly under budget. That results in the city adding about $600,000 to the fund balance at the end of the year, which really just helps meet the city's goals for finance, for fund balance at the end of the year. It's very stable, which is very positive. As far as the enterprise fund operations go, the water fund and the wastewater fund, as you can see, revenues both increased over the prior year. For the water fund, a combination of increase in usage, also an increase in rates, and you're also meeting your goal cash reserves in that fund, which is very positive. Similar for wastewater, there was -- here, there was a slight decrease in the usage side of it, but there's an increase in rates. So they offset each other, which compensated, and also very positive, you're making your wastewater cash reserve goal here as well that the city has laid out. As far as the stormwater fund goes, revenues did increase this year by about 12%. Really, that's reflecting the increase in rates that the city enacted. You do have about $793,000 in cash, where last year it was negative, but as I mentioned in the workshop, there is a long -- there's an advance between funds that's also being accounted for in that fund of about $1.3 million at the end of the year. There is a 10-year plan that is out there, and as you can see, in the past several years, the city has been making drastic improvements in bringing the operations of that fund around. As far as the liquor fund goes, there was a decrease of about 5% in sales this year with the increased competition in the area. The one thing to note is that the city was still able to transfer $700,000 out to the capital improvement maintenance fund, very positive. And you're also maintaining a gross profit percentage that is above the seven-county metro area as well, which is very positive. So even though you're having some slight declines in sales, you're still maintaining your gross profits, so you're managing the business very well. As far as where the estimated market values are for the city, there was an increase in 2016 up to about $9.6 billion. The estimates for 2017 and '18, as those continue to go out, those are going to eventually cross over that $10 billion range. So you've fully recovered from the lows back in 2012, '13, and you've fully recovered those now. As far as the tax capacities and the tax rates, as you can see here, there is a basically an inverse relationship. When the tax capacity increases, your tax capacity rates decrease. So really, just to show those in proportion, you can see those inverse relationships there. As far as -- okay, as far as the actual tax rates for the city go, and when you look at the seven-county metro area as well as the state as a whole, really, the key here is to focus on what you can control. That's the city line. It was 32.14% for 2016, a slight decrease from 2015, but significantly lower than both the seven-county metro area and the statewide as a whole for municipalities. So very positive there. You're controlling what you can control. Counties, schools, the special taxing districts, those are outside of your control, so you're doing a great job controlling what you can do. As I mentioned, you're about 13% lower than the seven-county metro area, and you're about 15% lower than the state average, which is very positive there. As far as revenues per capita, this really breaks it down on a per capita basis and compares it to similar-sized cities. And really, the key difference here is Eden Prairie has not received local government aid for over a decade now, where other cities of similar size, they may be receiving some of that. So that's really a big driver here. So without receiving local government aid, that shifts more of that to the property tax line. That's the unfortunate side about that, but it also allows you to be able to do that, to have the tax capacity here to make up that difference. As far as the expenditures per capita, the one thing that I did want to point out here, a couple of key things. The city isn't having to spend money similar to other-sized cities on debt service, so principal and interest payments. You're about half of the statewide average for similar-sized cities, which is very nice. It allows you to spend money on other more important factors for the city. So it's increasing in spending on community development, public safety, the police, the fire, those services that are core to a city, and then also having the parks and recreation departments as well. They just received an award for that. I think that that's a good way to show that. If you look at yourself compared to the rest of the state average, you're significantly above that, but it shows you're able to spend those monies. If your debt service was a lot higher, you wouldn't be able to spend that money the same way. So very positive there. As far as just some other financial highlights, the -- all of the required forms that the state auditor's office requires, those are going to get submitted on time. The city annually applies for a certificate of achievement in financial reporting for the GFOA. That'll get submitted by the June 30th deadline. The city has continued to maintain its AAA bond rating, very positive, very few cities in the state receive that, so it's very big kudos for the city on that. And then, as I mentioned, the certificate for achievement in financial reporting, the city's been receiving that every year since 1990. So very positive, won't expect anything different for this year. As far as just a heads-up on a new accounting standard that is going to be coming down the road here in a couple of years, it's re-looking at the post-employment benefits again for how municipalities and governments record those. Not going to be a huge impact for the city, but just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that that will be coming down the line in a couple of years. That pretty much concludes everything that I have, but I'm open to any questions that anybody may have.
Any questions? Again, thank you for this presentation and for the hour we spent with you during our council workshop. We've always tried to be very conservative in our budgeting and in our spending, and we know we've had consistently lower tax rate rises than other cities, comparable cities, but we were really stunned by that 32.14% number. Pleasantly pleased to see how much lower that is than similar cities, so.
Yeah, very positive.
It was an interesting chart. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Is there a motion to accept the report?
Yes, I move to accept the 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to pull or anything to add? Mr. Getchow, did you have something?
No, I will have something to pull on consent when we get to that.
Oh, okay. All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, May 2nd?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same date?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. A consent calendar, we have items A through P, and you had something to?
I did, Mayor and Council. We'd like you to remove item L. We would not be awarding that contract for concrete, we'll be needing to reject those bids, so we'd ask that that just -- there'd be no action taken on item L.
A through P excluding L.
Exactly.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve items A through P excluding L on the consent calendar.
Second.
Anything to discuss on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is the Hewler property. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have a application before you by Greg and Kelly Hewler and Pembeton Land Company for a subdivision of 4.46 acres, a single lot into three lots. The property is located at 12300 Riverview Road and overlooks the Minnesota River. The property is guided low-density residential and is currently zoned R113.5. Therefore, the guiding and zoning of the property allows for this proposed development without any waivers requested. As I mentioned earlier, there's currently an existing single-family home on the property that is proposed to remain, and the other two lots would be created for future single-family homes. The Planning Commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval of this project at their May 8th meeting, and the applicant developer is here to give you a presentation, and the city staff and the developer and applicant would be able to answer any questions that you would have prior to or after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Is a proponent here?
Mayor and council, my name is Dan Blake with Pembeton Land Company. Today, I'm representing Greg and Kelly Hewler, so just for clarity's sake, Pembeton is not the developer of this project, we're helping the Hewlers with this particular proposal. And I have a PowerPoint, but I don't see it there. Look at that. All right, we've got people working today. All right, I'm going to go through this quickly and be glad to come back to anything that somebody feels is helpful. And I get to focus on what I think is fun, because you guys probably are going to understand this, but we'll talk about it a little bit. So we have a 1937 aerial photo, and I can't point, so I'm going to describe some things. Hopefully, the audience can see it, and you have your screens. Top left, you can see the bottom of Starling Lake. Bottom, you can see the Minnesota River. Cutting diagonal across the screen, kind of centered left-ish, is Flying Cloud Drive, old 212, now Flying Cloud Drive again. Kind of in that left center, you might see some evidence of a grass-filled airport. You can see very -- a little bit hard to see, you can see Pioneer Trail cutting across east and west. You can see where a road that is in the Homeward Hills alignment going north-south. And most importantly, relative to this project, you see Riverview Road, which runs just north of the river. And Riverview Road, at that time, 1937, ran roughly from Town Line Road, which is now 169, there's things in between, and to Flying Cloud Drive and on to Shakopee. You can see, and I can't point again, at the sharp turn of the Riverview Road, the homestead that we're talking about today. There's a zoom in of the same photo. You can see there at the corner where the road takes a sharp left and goes down a big hill towards the river is the house, and I've got better pictures of the house, but I want you to take a little bit of notice of the vegetation in 1937. It was rather prairie, some trees that show up there, but a fair amount of open space. And it's hard to see in that photo, but we actually have gardens on the north edge and then obviously surrounded by farmyard. But I find it interesting that on a site that we're going to talk about is quite steep and difficult to develop, that somebody way before most of our time said, "Well, let's build a road down here." And you can drive it today, or the city does with their maintenance crews, but the existing road is abandoned because of some lack of, well, some washout for the river, quite a distance from here, and because it probably couldn't be improved to any kind of normal city standards. Couple aerial photos of the site today, again, you can see a lot more vegetation. This is the house, built in 1917. I did this math at the Planning Commission, that makes it 100 years old for you, here the preservation people. Front of the house, there's actually a garage behind it with a little guest room above it. We are proposing to retain the house, the driveway, the garage, pretty much exactly as it is today, just split off two additional parcels. If you look carefully down this picture, down the driveway was the road to the old barn. You might be able to convince yourself there's a clearing back there, because there is, and that's where one of the houses that we propose would to be lot three, and we'll get to that in a second, but it's where the barn was historically. So there's a natural clearing where that house roughly would go. Just as a view from the Hewler's yard, and obviously, it's rather spectacular. Quickly go through, we did look at a lot of concepts, a lot of different uses, but my first meeting with staff was in May 2016, so one year working on this. And here's where we land today. Three lots, including the existing house. We believe this is a compromise between eight or 10 or 11 lots you might normally get on a R113 site with four and a half acres and being sensitive to the trees and the slopes that are there. The location and the views from the river, I think, justify these big lots, so they're 1.1, I believe is the smallest acreage lot, to almost two acres. We envision, as you can kind of see in this sketch, possibly a common driveway coming in, maybe a gate or a fancy thing that looks like a gate, and then driveways branching off. We're kind of reserving the option for those driveways to be separated or combined as the individual buyers might want. So as you can see, the house to the far left on lot three is where the barn was, and then south of the existing house is another home site. These houses are depicted quite a bit larger than a real house, but we worked with staff, and they wanted to make sure we weren't underestimating the amount of disturbance that's going to happen on those sites. We know that We know that historically, these river bluff houses have been quite large. Again, we'll just keep this one here. We've got a little stormwater feature down at the very bottom, but it won't actually have water in it. It's really quite small. Also, at the very bottom of the picture, the very south end of the site, is some kind of old historic thing, a foundation. It's mentioned in the staff report. I just want to mention that we're not planning on touching that, and it will be in a conservation easement, mostly coincidentally, because there's some bluff there on that very south edge, and that's in a conservation easement, and just the way we drew the lines, that, that foundation, of which I think your team is working on some kind of possible study to figure more about that, but we aren't anywhere near that space. Little bit of discussion at staff level about how these private drives are going to work, and, and staff had suggested maybe we reconfigure lot lines to have long skinny necks, and we decided that this was the best way to do it with driveway easements and to retain some flexibility in how this might work. As I said, there was a barn back in that far site. You could actually drive your car up there today on the grass. It's, you know, it's not a driveway, but it almost looks like it would be a driveway, roughly where we show a driveway to that back house. So, it's, it's a little bit less disruptive than it might seem if you go up there and take a quick look. You have noticed in the staff report probably a disproportionate amount of conditions. We don't disagree with any of them. There may be some that aren't necessary and are covered in ordinances in other places, but there was no surprises there. All this was discussed with staff. It is a somewhat unique site, and we are, you know, quite accepting of those conditions. Lacking, I guess, not want to go into too much more, but be available for questions that you might have. I, I think it's somewhat simple.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Blake? No? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Hewler property subdivision? Okay. Counsel, do you have a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for a preliminary plat of one lot into three lots, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Any discussion needed?
I, I would like to say I'm glad that they're taking into account the steep slopes and any possible erosion and the river and all that kind of thing. That's exactly what we like.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. The next item for public hearing is a code amendment related to wetlands. Mr. Getcho?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a code update mainly based on both bringing the code up to date with current state law, so housekeeping in that respect, but also clarifying some processes, procedures related to wetland applications and reviews. So, you'll see on the cover sheet, there's about eight or nine bullets of the specific changes being made to City Code Section 11.51 to make, you know, quite frankly, development related to wetlands more streamlined and efficient. So, you'll see some language that talks about clarifying when buffers may not be required or fill is necessary, or also when the environmental coordinator could waive a wetland determination based on a very small project such as a parking lot redevelopment. As I mentioned, also clarifying, you know, what, what structure setbacks might be as it pertains to both City Code and state statute, and updating references and documents related to state rules and statute. So, the staff, myself, and/or Mr. Ellis could certainly answer any questions you might have about this revision.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Okay, is there a motion?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 11.51 Standards for Protection of Wetlands.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of Claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval of payments of claims, this mid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Worstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara-Louken?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to reports, and we'll start off with some reports of council members. The first thing is that I would like to report on our city manager evaluation. The city manager's contract provides for performance review by the city council in conjunction with a salary review. At our meeting on May 2nd of 2017, our council went into closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager for the calendar year 2016. Mr. Getcho attended the first part of the session and provided his own self-evaluation. He then left the meeting, and the city council considered and discussed his performance. Council members individually had completed an evaluation of the city manager. The council's evaluations included, he has done an excellent job meeting and exceeding expectations. He is a strong role model. His performance is exemplary. He successfully created a realistic budget that provides excellent services at one of the lowest tax rates among peer cities. He maintains and enhances the quality and performance of work plans that fall under his purview. He has excellent leadership. His key strengths include his communication skills, his ability to work well with others and a variety of people. He is intelligent and proactive in dealing with challenging issues. The positivity he brings to his work, that he creates a vision for the city that, that the council shares, and that he accomplishes matters that help the council achieve its goals, and he pays great attention to detail. The council acknowledged that Mr. Getcho's performance has been excellent and that he was an excellent city manager. The council noted that Mr. Getcho's current salary is $170,000 as a result of the waiver from the salary cap, and that his performance merited an increase. That salary cap is based on the governor's salary cap. Based on his performance, the council requested an agenda item be included in a regular city council meeting to consider action on a request for a waiver from the current salary cap. The council invited Mr. Getcho back into the meeting and shared our, its evaluation of his performance, and that salary consideration would be deferred until state action on a waiver from the salary cap. So, all in all, it was a very excellent review, which is consistent with the many excellent reviews that he's received since he started working for us. And we were very happy to pursue an exception to the salary cap again. So, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to direct the city attorney to file an application to request a waiver of the current maximum salary allowed under Minnesota Statute 43A.17 from the Commissioner of Minnesota Management and Budget to allow the city council to compensate the position of the city manager an annual salary of up to $175,100 effective January 1st, 2017, and if a waiver is granted, hereby approve an increase in salary up to the amount of the waiver requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. So, thank you for another good review. Mr. Russell, do we need to have a motion on accepting the summary of the closed session?
No, you do not.
All right, thank you.
The, the document, though, will be part of the record of the meeting.
Thank you. The next item is a report from the Community Development Director regarding the Kopesky Second Edition Trail Connection. And we were discussing this earlier, and because the condition of a trail was something that was new at the last council meeting, we are going to allow some discussion with residents. So, Ms. Jeremiah?
Yes, Your Honor, council members. As you recall, on April 18th, you did approve first reading of the Kopesky Second Edition with the added condition of a trail connection between Lots 2 and 3, which is at the end of the Dove Court cul-de-sac. And this would provide a connection to the existing Dell Road Trail and provide some convenience particularly for people in the neighborhood heading north on that trail. So, city council direction was given, and we have been drafting a development agreement to reflect that. We have reviewed the trail in relation to safety and our comprehensive plan policies to improve connections and the like, and the like, and we do agree with the city council's direction to add that trail. So, we are basically asking the city council to reaffirm tonight the direction from April 18th, but obviously, the applicant would like you to, to reconsider and would like to speak tonight on their behalf. And I believe that it's Mr. Charlie, Charles Howley?
Okay. If you'd like to come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
Madam Mayor, councilors, thank you. Charlie Howley with HTPO Engineering here in Eden Prairie, 7510 Marketplace Drive. And again, thank you for listening to us, as we didn't get an opportunity to rebut that condition at the time. And again, thank you again for the approval of the preliminary plat. And we're, you know, looking forward to doing final plan and developers' agreement. I do have one or two exhibits, if I could go over to the podium and get them shown.
That'd be great.
Hello, my name is Jeff Surum. I'm a real estate attorney with the Frederickson-Birman Law Firm in Minneapolis, and I represent Kopesky and Associates. And I will be presenting as well to go over our independent review of the trail connection and share our thoughts and conclusions.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Oh, who's going to go first? Okay, Charlie.
I'm going to just start here quickly, thank you. So, we, we've studied the trail in both our opinion of applicability to the site and, and design. And we feel that just, although we're not generally against trail connections, certainly not, but this just isn't, in our opinion or the developer's opinion, the right fit, and glad that you can take the time to listen to us. So, here is a map, an aerial of the existing trail and sidewalk network. I, I hope you can see the colors, but the red is, is the, kind of the multi-use Batumis Trails, and the yellow is the more concrete sidewalks. And here, of course, is the Kopesky property and the little cul-de-sac that's proposed. So, as you know, the trail condition says to connect a trail from the end of the cul-de-sac and tee it into the existing trail on the east side of Dell. And the one thing on this map I would like to point out is we, we got some feedback from the residents, some of the same residents who are here, and not necessarily in opposition to development, but, but talk strongly about tree protection and things like this, as you remember. And the comments we received back were from the residents with X's here, and I hope you can see those. And those comments generally say?
Zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, we can zoom in a little bit. Right here, there. So, there's four X's there, and most notably, there's these three. And they, they don't support the trail. They would rather it not go in. And, you know, they're the three lots that would, in theory, benefit the most or use it the most. The rest of the homes here have their driveway on 82nd, and so that leaves, one would argue, really two or three houses here on Dove that may choose to head west instead of just what they do right now, which is come right down here and then work their way wherever they want around the city. And so, being that the, the developer didn't really feel this trail was in their best interest, and the residents close us by, didn't feel it was in the best residence, we felt compelled to, to bring it back just for a little more discussion. And the other thing on this map I want to talk briefly about is, overall, the trail network, where do people generally want to get to? And, and we would hope and feel and assume that Rice Marsh Lake Park and Miller Park are two destinations in this part of town for anybody who gets on the trail network. And it, you can be pointed out that the, the residents in this neighborhood want to go south and east to get there, and so that trail may not provide the, the convenience one might assume to head in that direction. Now, we would acknowledge that if somebody wanted to go up to Highway 5, they, they certainly could. But being an industrial area, there's, there's not a lot up there. So, how inviting would that really be? So, with that, I think I'll pass it over to Jeff, who's got a couple of other points, and I've got a couple of other exhibits that I'll put up as well.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. And I'm going to dovetail on some of Charlie's comments. And my role is I took a look at the city pedestrian bicycle plan adopted by the city, and it, because I want to get an idea of how does this unique development fit into the overall goal of greater connectivity to the rest of the city. And there, there's three points to make. One, the, the trail seems to be an interconnected looping system. And this small addition would, would dead-end back into some city streets that do not have sidewalk access. So, I, I do not believe that it necessarily falls in line with that scope. The other, and probably the most important issue that I looked into was safety. Charlie, if you would be able to put up the diagram that you just had up previously that shows the... Yes, exactly. If you take a look at Dell Road, there's a, you'll see a curb. And if you're a car traveling northbound, you'll slow down until 82nd Street. And that's where the existing sidewalk is at a controlled intersection, where these residents, including the residents of our development, would walk down to, to currently reach, reach the trail on Dell Road. Under the proposal, we would cut a trail between Lots 2 and 3 out to Dell Road to the north. Looking at the topography of this site, the trail from the residents, it would be a relatively steep decline down to Dell Road. And the concern is children on bicycles. Vehicles are going to be coming out of the turn, traveling northbound, accelerating over that curb. And children will be on bicycles going down a accelerating slope to an intersection where their only choice is to take a sharp 90-degree turn left or right. I think the concern is that the risk of an accident is significant when you combine those two elements. And for those reasons, we think it'd be much safer for residents and their children to take the existing path down to 82nd Street, where motorists would expect and anticipate children being at the intersection, and continue to use that approach. And we, and, and as Charlie alluded to, the two most likely recreational facilities these residents would want to use are to the south and east. So, taking that all together, we do not believe that this is the best use for this property, and we think it'd be better for the safety of the residents to not have that trail in place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellis, question on, on the steepness of the trail. Couldn't the trail be brought in at some kind of an angle, kind of feathered into the bike trail along Dell Road so that it wasn't an abrupt 90-degree angle?
I think you could transport some of that slope so that when you're coming off the cul-de-sac, it might be steeper there, and then gradually ties into Dell Road.
Then it wouldn't be as steep an entry either, yeah.
Yeah, and if I may just add a few other comments. Just taking a closer look at, you know, precedence, where do we have other situations? Where off the end of a cul-de-sac or a dead-end road, do we have a trail that bisects between two properties? And just looking in this neighborhood, we've got examples at Belfast, Inverness Curve, George Moran Drive, and then if you hop over in Highway 5 into that neighborhood, you see Tycon de Rosa Trail, Idlewood Way, Haynes Way are examples. So, that's just looking at a small part of Eden Prairie. So, not unprecedented. I think that we've done this in other neighborhoods. Also, taking a look at who would benefit from this. So, I think the, the picture, the engineer displayed showed that of those who didn't oppose the trail, there were a handful of properties, three. And then there will be new property owners that move into the neighborhood as well. But what does it mean? So, if you have that direct connection to Dell Road versus having to walk back into the neighborhood, down to the south, and then back to Dell Road, it's really about a third of a mile of distance you're adding for anybody who wants to go north on Dell Road. Anybody who wants to go south a little bit shorter, about a sixteenth of a mile. So, it's, it's real distance. And I don't think that you can predetermine where people want to go. It's not just Rice Marsh Lake, it's not just Miller. People want to go see their friends. Maybe they want to go up to Dairy Queen or to Kowalski's or some of the other facilities that are on the north. There's a trail that follows Highway 5, that's kind of a regional connector trail. So, I think... So, I think that you would see people that would benefit by going north and from going south. So, you know, as far as sightlines, when I take a look at the existing intersection at 82nd Street, it's on a curve, heavily vegetated. It doesn't provide the best sightline, so not the best location for people to cross Dell Road. If it did move farther north, people can get more visibility or cars can visualize the pedestrian bicyclists. So, I think there would be some benefits. And again, this isn't something that's unprecedented. The final thing I'll say, being the operator, maintainer of the utilities, is we have a water and sewer line that run right where this trail is being located. I always have reservations about them not being in the road because people like to plant trees on them, put sheds, put fences, and that creates future obstacles for us. So, from a utility standpoint, I like the fact that there would be a paved trail, provides better maintenance, and it keeps future problems from arising over our utilities.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
The only other thing I'd like to point out is what this trail will not interconnect into any existing sidewalk, so it would just go into-
It goes into another trail. Yeah. And we've got lots of trails that go into other trails.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Did either of you want to address the council on this? Okay. So, we are not doing the second reading today. This is just to get reaffirmation of the direction that was given on the 18th of April for a trail connection. And I guess my personal feeling is that, you know, we're a city that has so many cul-de-sacs. If we had developed like a normal, not normal, but a grid-type system, we would- this road would go all the way through to Dell Road. There would be a trail or a sidewalk on both sides of the road, and there'd be plenty of access for people. So, when we're trying to get people to have the ability to recreate easily, to use our bike and trail and walking system for getting to and from work or to their friends' houses or to the store, I think anything that we can do to help create that connection is worth it. And this seems like a pretty small connection. I mean, not a big deal. It's not a huge trail going through a ton of homes or behind a bunch of homes. I'd still like to see it happen. Other thoughts? For some reason, my little board here is off.
I guess I'd have to say I'm a little bit ambivalent about it, whether it goes through or not. Obviously, the cul-de-sac neighborhood, you know, the existing one as well as the new one, doesn't have sidewalks, so it's not a major connection to there. I do agree, though, that going into a trail, you know, it's not as good for walking because that's more sidewalk and the trail is more bicycles, or I'm sure people do run and stuff on them. I do like the fact that it does connect into a commercial area. And I don't know that this will bring a huge amount of traffic in or out, and especially if there's already the easements for sewer, water, and power and such going through there. It doesn't seem like it would really stop a house from being built or anything like that. I guess I'd rather see it the narrowest trail that we do rather than a wide one.
Anything else?
No, I am- I will move to reconfirm the city council's direction on 4/18/2017 for the first reading to include a trail connection from Dove Court to Dell Road.
And hopefully, it can be feathered in at an angle so that the slope isn't so great. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Call-in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for coming. Oh, you've already moved. The next is a report from our park and rec director, Mr. Lothammer.
Your honor, council members, at a previous meeting, it was before you, and overviewed the Riley Lake Park master plan in quite a bit of detail. And so, what I'd like to do tonight is inform you about the bids that came back. And the action before you tonight is to award and approve the bids with some of the ad alternates. But in light of the conversation about the parking, I'd also like to give you some more information about that as well. So, we did open the bids. We were more than pleasantly surprised. Our estimate was $1.7 million. Our low bid came back at $1.5 million, and it ranged all the way up to $2.3. So, we feel good about the number and how that interacts with the market and the price that's out there. The base bid, and I have up the plan, I'd like to just walk you through, but the base bid itself, show you with my pen here, the base bid takes care of the entrance, the parking lot, the landscaping within the rain gardens, the construction of the rain gardens, and the major portion of the trail itself, as well as the expansion of the beach. Now, typically, we do also go out for alternates so that we can better understand what those prices are for those particular items. And so, we did have several in this case. And alternate A, which I can show you on the plan, is the picnic area, which is just north of the beach, right in here. And then that's also inclusive of the concrete patios, the picnic tables, the grills, and the landscaping areas around that. Alternate B is the natural seating areas, the construction of the three flagstone areas and the adirondacks that we had described before. Alternate C is a pedestrian lighting system. These are bollard about waist-high, and that goes around this particular circle. We are suggesting that we reject that bid. The costs for that, we feel, are well above what the value is. Doesn't mean we can't do it in the future. As lighting costs go down or different types of lightings available, we can always look at that, but we really felt like we'd be paying too much. And at this point in time, it's not that critical to the project. It certainly is a benefit and amenity, but we felt like now's not the right time to accept that alternate. Pedestrian lighting and wayfinding, which is alternate D, that is the ground lighting that interacts with these seating areas as well as the beach and also the seating areas at the overlook and also this seating overlook in this area as well by the Let's Go Fishing. Alternate E is the seating area, the largest lakeside seating area, patio, picnic area, picnic tables, some benches, and also some shade umbrellas. And then area, alternate F, is the lakeside seating next to the Let's Go Fishing dock. Actually, both of these do end up supporting Let's Go Fishing as they drop people off in the small buses and they're staging in these areas whether they want shade or if they are okay without the shade, but waiting for that boat to come in or the drop-off from the boat, waiting for the bus to come back. So, we feel like both those areas are also important. So, those are really the parts of the action tonight is to approve and accept the bids, award the base bid, plus all of the alternates with the exception of C. The concerns that have been raised that you heard earlier tonight, as well as received some emails, are the number of parking stalls. And for us, we were simply responding to the number of people that we'd witnessed on Riley Lake Road over the years on very busy days. Most days, the 15 cars that are currently there, seven or eight boats are parked, trailers are parked in there. But on the busier weekends, we know that up on Riley, there are a handful of people that park up there. So, we felt by taking or allowing those people on those busy days to park in the parking lot, that's what got us to the 22 spots. The safety of not having people up on the road. I'll show you another graph here. There's actually two in order to depict this. What this shows you is if you want to get to the boat launch, this green line, all of this is no parking. All of it's no parking along Riley or Pioneer Trail, all the way till about this particular spot. There's an older home across the road. So, you can start to park here all the way till Dell on both sides if you want. It is about a third of a mile walk, so it is fairly inconvenient, but people still do that. Now, if you head the other way on Pioneer Trail, again, you take the boat launch and you come up and head west on Pioneer Trail, you go closer to about a fourth or a half mile away before you can park on Pioneer Trail again. Some people do do that. This neighborhood, a new neighborhood, it's signed no boat trailer parking or no trailer parking, so the residents can certainly park on the road. These are all no parking at all, so just the standard P with the hash through it. So, what I want to also kind of lay out for you too is, there are some ways to analyze this. The more I look into it statistically, trying to analyze it can be difficult, and you can certainly poke a lot of holes in what the data might show. This was somewhat referred to earlier. If we were to go to 22 spots, what you would notice, if you just used it by area of lake and acreage and did the math, you're kind of in, somewhat in the neighborhood. If you look at Bryant Lake, as part of Bryant Lake Park, there are 20 parking spots for a smaller-sized lake. It is homes on the lake. It's really hard to get totally apples-to-apples or analogous because some lakes don't have as many homes, some lakes have a bigger area. So, this just gives you an idea of how- it can be kind of all over the board, and I think you're looking at what makes sense to be in a range. The other piece-
Ratio, Jay, this ratio is acres per boat or per parking spot?
Parking spot, yes. We also, in terms of doing a little more sort of study, this is from 2016, and I just grabbed a snapshot. We have aquatics invasive species inspectors that are at the boat launch. So, if you go back to Memorial Day last year, high of 81 degrees, no precipitation, so a pretty nice day for boating. At that point, we had 44 that were counted as entered, 54 exited, and this is between basically 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, so a pretty full coverage of counting that day. And 13 that were unclassified. Not sure why that was the case, but some of them were probably entered, some of them were exited. There's a decent amount of people that go fishing there early in the morning. So, when you look at the 110 total, you can almost divide that a little bit in half, or we probably don't count the entrances of the early morning fisher people. So, that's why the math doesn't work out perfectly. They're not there when people aren't going right on the water. So, I lay that out to you because when we look at Saturday, the 19th, this is the total counts of entrances and exits. So, it's probably, we counted nine people entering and 10 people exiting. So, it's the same boats. You have to divide kind of by two there. Sunday, the 13th, a fairly busy day, but that's about, you know, 54, 50 boats somewhere in there that are using the public landing during that kind of full day of use. But again, you have to say to yourself at any given time, what are the numbers on the lakes? We count that on the beach on an hourly basis to know how many people are sitting on the beach. We can't count that on Lake Riley because of the bays that are there. We couldn't stand there with binoculars and see the whole lakes and do some of those counts. So, we have some snapshots of what gives us an idea. There's multiple factors. If the fishing's really good, you probably see between 6:00 in the morning and noon a lot of boats that are putting around fishing. If it's a really nice calm day in the afternoon, you might see more people that are out there doing more pleasure boating or water skiing and those things. And then fishing comes back at night. When you look at what the people are using it for, there are some of those trends, but you never absolutely capture it all unless we spent a lot of money on staffing it and roaming the lake throughout all of the summer days. So, again, I just take you back to why we were doing it, why we- what our response was to the traffic up above. I will say that I don't believe that any decisions need to be made tonight, and I'll bring back our plan again. I think a couple ideas going forward to give us the most flexibility over time is if you built it as it is today, there's still that flexibility to reduce the numbers in a couple ways. We have nine-foot whis stalls right now. If we switch those to 10 or 11, people that maybe drive trailers like I do would be even more happy. But nine is doable. 10 or 11 would reduce the number of spaces by a couple and would give you more safety between the boats and the trailers. A couple other things that we can do, we already during the week give Let's Go Fishing boat captains a special pass to park in here during the week because there aren't- it isn't full with trailers. One of the things that we could do is, in the middle of these boat stalls, we could put signs into the ground and make that more of an exception for car parking only. We know that sometimes there's more than one car that comes along with the boater. And so, we have a lot of flexibility going forward if we build it as this to be able to reduce if we want to. This area here, which is three spots, they aren't pull-through, so they're not the best. They're still work. But these three spots, you could almost look at them as almost like a proof of parking as we see with some businesses too. So, there's ways for us to be still with this configuration, anywhere between that 15 and 22. If we shrink it down, there's no way to be up at that 22. So, we could build it and analyze it. We could build it slightly smaller than what's proposed in terms of number of spots. But in terms of the action tonight, certainly open to feedback on the parking, but we don't need to make a decision and give any direction to the contractor. The action tonight is solely about moving forward with awarding the contract and moving forward with construction. The construction itself wouldn't start until July 10th, giving the least amount of disruption through the construction season, going at least through the Fourth of July before any construction begins down there in stages. There's been a couple questions about what about the boat launch? Will that be open and available? We do know that there is a time, a window, probably sometime middle to third week in August, where there will be five to seven days that the boat launch would not be available because that's being reconstructed itself. That's something that we would reach out to the neighbors once we got closer in construction, weather determining some of that, that we can let them know in advance. Starting a week from today, it'll be down for X amount of days. So, we feel comfortable about that portion as well. So, happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
Councilmember Nelson.
I have one question that's occurred to me. I think the first time I had looked at that large parking lot, I assumed there would be some parking for cars in there. We're putting a lot of amenities down near the lake. Where are cars supposed to park? How far away are we asking people to walk to get to our amenities if all this parking is simply for boats and trailers?
Yeah. So, currently, there's no car parking allowed in the current 15-stall parking lot that's down in kind of this current area.
Where do cars park then that are heading for our new amenities?
They park right up in here. There's a huge parking lot up here.
Not terribly handicapped accessible.
There is a trail that comes down and will now link into here, depending on what you're using. There's also car parking here that has handicap stalls. So, if there are people that are coming, that do have handicap parking permits, this is the area that is fully reserved for them. These long stalls are for the boat and trailer scenario.
There's no way to put some more handicap parking near the Let's Go Fishing area?
So, the scenario with Let's Go Fishing is, they come in the 15-passenger, 12-passenger buses, which then allows them, you see this bump out right here, the bus can pull off and they can have access either to queue up here, queue up here, or go directly to the dock.
Yeah. You know, I would almost like it if we took a couple of, you know, say, at least two of those full boat spots and turned that into four handicapped parking places. It would reduce a little bit about the boat and trailer, but something that's going to be very close to all those new chairs and things.
You know, in working with our consultant, the belief on the amount of those spaces would likely sit empty almost all of the time. The belief is that with the handicap parking here, the handicap parking that is right up in here on the nearest part of that parking lot is that we are at more than enough of demand for those with handicap parking permits.
It seems like we could analyze that and see how well these are being used, and if there isn't enough handicap parking, then we can reconfigure one of those.
A lot of this is paint and signs to make any changes.
Right.
That's the real important part of the work at this point has been, how do we capture the stormwater? How do we configure some of the turning radiuses and the length of the stalls? That's been the important part of the design. Otherwise, there's quite a bit of flexibility that really is paint or a sign or a signpost to create that.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Yeah, I always liked the idea of having options and having flexibility, so I really liked the idea of being able to have that space for potential, whether it's trailer or car, and figure it out. But if we don't do it, then we just are restricted. But anyway, I have a question about, so if we added these extra stalls for boat and trailer, does this harm in any way, or does it push, like, the potential number of boats on the lake that would have a negative impact? I don't know if there's a capacity for the certain acres of lake that Riley is, but is there any concern about that? Are there any kind of environmental concerns that I should know about?
You know, I think that's what the people that live on the lake are expressing concern about, or the Lake Association is expressing concern about, that this could have five or more parking, seven more boat-trailers in this particular parking lot now. Part of the logic then assumes that you, maybe we're turning away five to seven up on Pioneer Trail, and now by allowing those five to seven, so in 2016, 15 people would have parked in our parking lot at the public launch. Five to seven people, 22 total, then would have launched. And in this case, they're suggesting the logic would be that if now those first five to seven didn't have to park up there, they would come down into our lot, and an additional five to seven would see that those spots are open, and would park up on the road and make the trek down. So on some really, really heavy days, maybe that's the case. It's hard to know.
What is the average amount of time that boaters are out? It's, is there, is there an average, so five hours, three hours, four hours?
Not something that we've calculated. I wouldn't want to take a stab. I think it's weather-related, time of the year, what you're doing.
If the fish are biting.
Yeah.
What's, yeah.
If the fish are biting.
Yeah. It seems so hard to get your arms around. Yeah.
Going back to the parking on Pioneer Trail, you know, you mentioned that the assumption is that these five to seven cars that have trailers that are parked there on Pioneer Trail will now move in, and an additional five to seven will take their place parking on Pioneer Trail, which may or may not be true. I mean, why would they not be parking there now?
You would, and it isn't that, you know, so if we saw 10 to 12 up there, because that is possible, and you know, it means the last people there are walking four more boat lengths, trailer and car lengths distance, I think that logic is a little more clear that you go from 22 then to 27 versus 15 to 22, and only are now accommodating those extra five to seven down in the parking lot.
Is there some reason that the no parking along Pioneer Trail can't be extended?
It can be. It was in the past something because it's a county road that the county would have to be accepting of. So one of our roads to interact with would be Dell Road. We're still a ways away from Dell Road. I don't know going any farther west. It starts to taper down at the creek crossing, so I'm not sure that that would be as good of opportunity to extend the no parking. But that has been, that's why this was created as no parking in the beginning, is because there were a lot of people parking right from Riley Lake Road all the way along Pioneer Trail, and you were getting a lot of boat traffic parking up on the road.
So if it persists as a problem, we could petition Hampton County to extend the no parking area.
We could do that. We are bound by the DNR because this is a public water, and it's a public boat launch, that we don't have the authority to say, stop no more people launching. So however they get their boat down there, they need to be able to launch, and that may mean they park in another neighborhood now a mile away and do a little bit of shuttling. So we could just potentially, if there is that demand there, just be displacing it farther out into neighborhoods potentially, too.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to accept the base bid and alternates A, B, D, E, and F, and authorize entering into a contract with Odessa Two LLC for the Riley Lake Park Improvement Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Again, this was simply awarding the bids today. It was not making a final decision on the configuration of this parking area. Okay. Thank you. Anything else to bring before the council tonight? Don't hear that there is anything. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.